Call the meeting back to order. We'll begin with the pleasurable allegiance. I invite you to join us.
A pleasurable allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Colpak?
Here.
Pepcorn?
Here.
Strand?
Turnberg?
Here.
Mahoney?
Here.
We came out of the executive session and we... One motion. Pepcorn, please.
I apologize, Mayor. I move to direct the city attorney to seek an attorney general opinion regarding receipt and storage of inmate property.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Prove the order. Is there a motion? And one petition of annexation to the regular agenda for adoption. This will be at the beginning of our agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Colpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of July 21st, 2025 meeting, July 25th, 2025 meeting, special meeting, July 31st, 2025 special meeting? I see a motion. So moved? Is there a second?
Second.
Got used to these new mics, huh? Move to the second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no? Motion carried. Consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve these consent agenda items, 1 through 41? Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Colpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
We'll take an explanation of the annexation matters. Jim Gilmore and Eric Johnson to explain, please.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Eric Johnson, Assistant City Attorney. Jim Gilmore, of course, am I right? Yeah, thank you for adding this item to the agenda. Really, Jim is going to explain a little bit about the annexation, but I thought I'd set the table a little bit by mentioning that we're here to do two suggested motions that are on before you... The first is to approve the three resolutions of annexation that you just put on the agenda along with a fourth item, which is actually a petition to deannex, requesting that Harwood deannex a certain parcel that is city-owned land. Those were acted upon on Thursday in a special meeting. A vote was taken, a public call of the roll, but the actual item itself was remained in the executive session. So what we'll ask you, when they're done with this explanation, is for you to approve a motion simply to receive and file resolutions of annexation, those three resolutions of annexation for the three parcels that we're going to talk about, the fourth being the deannexation petition. And then the second motion we'll ask you to act on and presumably approve will be to ratify, publicly ratify and adopt the same annexation resolution. They're identical in terms of, you know, resolving to begin the process of annexation on these three parcels. And the deannexation request, identical, but important to separate the two. One was action taken initially on Thursday, the 31st of July. And then the second set is just identical resolution, but acted upon today by you. So with that, maybe I'll hand it over to Jim to talk a little bit about the actual annexation and the process.
There's three annexations here. The east half of Section 3, as you can see on that map, is one... This is actually in our extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction. And it was always intended that eventually that this would be in the city of Fargo. On the eastern edge of this half section, there's already utilities. About a decade ago, there was a subdivision that was up in that area to the east. And then following the 2009 flood, it was determined it was kind of difficult to develop that prior to the diversion. There's another portion also outlined in blue, a little bit to the north of that, that we're proposing to be annexed. Again, this area is also in the city's extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction. The reason we've broken this into two annexations is there are two different property owners. So the pace of those two annexations might be different depending on whether or not the property owners would protest. The west half of Section 3, which is immediately north of the softball complex, the city of Harwood is currently exercising zoning jurisdiction in that area. And so as part of this process, we will ask Harwood to, you know, permit us to go ahead and annex that. If they don't do that, then we can go into mediation and discussion with Harwood. Finally, the petition to deannex, that is property that was formerly the Harwood Lagoon. When they started having their sewage go into the city's system, the city of Fargo acquired that. And so while the city owns the property, it's actually in the city of Harwood. We're asking that that be deannexed from Harwood. I think in the long term, the city's looking at using this for a snow dump site. And so if we're going to be investing your resources into that, it would best be in the city of Fargo. Be happy to answer any questions, but I think this is in line with the pattern of growth. I can go to the second map. I think this kind of is an aerial that shows you where those sites are. Probably the things to call attention to is immediately south of this is our sewage lagoons. And they're not used for treatment anymore, but they're owned by the city. And then you can see the softball complex. At the bottom of the map, you can kind of see the Amazon warehouse, just to give you a reference for where that is. And we continue to see a lot of industrial growth in this area. And so, you know, anticipate that in the future, there could be more growth up into this area as those areas fill in or someone needs a larger site. So be happy to answer any questions and then if not, we've got the suggested motion.
Any que...
So, Mr. Chair, I just have a question. So the lagoons now, they're just used for stormwater? Is that correct? Can you tell a little bit about that?
I love Jim Hassauer's here, but as I understand, they're used for kind of overflow if the sewer treatment plant were to be ever have not enough capacity, sort of an emergency overflow until that sewage could be treated. Secondly, when the river is real low, they have to wait to discharge treated water into the river. And so it's stored here temporarily. So again, you're right, it's not used for treatment, but it's sort of used on a case-by-case basis. And as the new sewer plant is, you know, operating, they may not need, you know, this many areas. So maybe that could be repurposed in the future.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to receive and file an annexation resolution from Thursday, July 31st, 2025?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Colpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Is there a motion to ratify and adopt the resolution of annexation as described in the suggested motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Colpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
I'm so sorry.
That's right.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Now we'll go to public hearings. RLN Business Park, second edition. Approval recommended by Planning Commission. Zoning change from General Industrial to Limited Industrial. First reading of the rezoning ordinance. Donald Crest, you explain.
Okay. Good evening, commissioners. Donald Crest, the Department of Planning and Development. I'll be presenting the next two items, which include ordinances prepared by the city attorney's office. The first item, as the mayor has stated, is RLN Business Park, second edition. So it's a zone change from... Thank you. A zone change from GI, General Industrial, to LI, Limited Industrial. Subject property is located here at 455133rd Street North. So this is County 20. The Amazon warehouse is a reference. Sewage lagoons. And subject property looks like this here. It is a large lot, as you see there. And it is... There's no permanent development on it. There are some construction trailers, some construction equipment here. And then 46th, this time, dead ends right here. So it may continue on in the future, but right now it just stops. And then 33rd Street will continue north all the way up to 52nd shortly, as the adjacent plat to the north is approved. Within the zoning here is GI, General Industrial. And the applicant's motivation to rezone this, the General Industrial Zone, as there's a chart in your staff report that indicates the setbacks in that are large. It's really intended for large lots for large industrial uses. On a smaller lot, rezoning it to LI reduces the required setbacks and makes more of a lot developable. It is a smaller lot here. So staff originally recommended approval for that. Planning Commission also recommended approval. That's what their... Those are three small lots that are just tied together there. So the applicant's representative, Tony Sager, from MBN Engineering, is with us this evening. May wish to address the commission. The recommended motion is stated in the staff report, shown on your screen. That's the staff's presentation. Thank you.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to the zoning change? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Go ahead. You can have your time.
Just a small correction. Andrew Phil with Law, Rights and Justice on this one. But if there's any questions...
I'm sorry. Sorry.
You're good.
Sorry.
If there's any questions at all, I'd be happy to answer. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Staff regrets there. I do know the difference between the two of them. That was my mistake.
Thank you for correcting that. Do I have a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item 43, Sullivan Edition. Approval recommended by Planning Commission, 5625. It's a zoning change from General Office and Public Institutional. So first reading of rezoning ordinance and a plat of Sullivan, second edition. Donald Crest, you explain.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So our property here is located on the corner of 25th Street South and 52nd Avenue South, the home of St. Anne and Jokum Church. There's also a rectory here and related offices for the church. The proposal here is to replat this to create another lot. Here's the site here. You've probably all been by this many times, a very large church there. And here we see a couple of views of the other parts of the lot. There is some construction going on. There has been recently approved a permit to build another building here. That building permit's been approved by city staff. So they're doing some site work related to that. The zoning here, as the mayor stated, is from General Office and Public Institutional to General Office and Public Institutional. And what that means is that the property is currently zoned, as you see here, and will be zoned about the same way. But some of those lots are deed split lots, and we're creating a new platted lot. So it says we're replating the entire property. We want to make sure that the zoning aligns with the actual new property lines. It's largely an administrative thing, but that's why it seems like... But you're not changing the zoning. Well, we aren't, but we have to just make sure it's aligned with the new lot lines. So for future development, you don't want like a foot of some other zoning on your lot. Subject property here is the church will be on Lot 1, large lot there. The existing building on Lot 2. There'll be a new building under construction here on Lot 3. And Lot 4 is to be developed in the future.
What are they going to put in there, Donald?
I believe it is a home for... A residence for retired priests, I believe, is the plan. The applicant's representative, this time, Tony Sager of MBN Engineering, is with us this evening. May address, wish to address the commission. If you're going to recommend approval, please use the motion on the screen. The only difference between that and the one in your staff report is the one on the screen deletes the reference to the 2007 growth plan. Some projects carried over a little bit, but since we have the 2024 growth plan, now we no longer need to refer to the 2007. But that would be the motion for approval. That's the staff's presentation. Thank you, commissioners.
Is there anyone present wishing to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
At noon today, we gave the preliminary mayor's budget at that time. And it's a balanced budget with revenues $140,287,211, with expenses matching that. We did some changes from the workshop, and those were outlined with the commissioners today. Next slide. In this slide, you saw a comparison to 2025 to 2026 and saw the changes which we have in the budget from that time. What we're trying to ascertain is what the highest maximum revenue is that we can ask for, and that would be the 3% plus growth. You can see that actually the operating expenses only went up 1.53%, which I think is exemplary. The staff worked real hard to get it down to that amount. And again, our staff and personal expenses are up 75% of our budget, which makes up most of our budget. Next slide. Also, when you look at the preliminary general fund revenues, it lines with what we get. And a lot of people get confused about property tax, but we only obtain 33% of our revenue from property taxes. The other revenues are placed on the pie graph, and you can see what happens to that. Interestingly enough, the public safety sales tax only generates 4% of the budget. Next slide. So the next steps are to approve the preliminary budget as presented this evening and schedule a public hearing for final budget, September 15, 2025, at 5:05. All commissioners are welcome to work with budgeting staff, and they can work on changing the budget. This just allows the most that we can take as revenue is what's outlined in this budget at this time. In the old days, it used to be we're going up 1 mil or 2 mils. Today, it's 3% plus growth is what we're going up. So it's a little bit different because we have to talk real money to real money, is what we have to do. So I look...
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Colpak?
Yeah, I made a number of comments at the noon meeting today. I want to thank staff and department heads for the amount of work that went into this budget. It's been several months, and the number of meetings I've had with my five portfolio departments, as well as other department heads, has been extremely helpful. You know, it's my fourth budget approval in my beginning, my fourth year as commissioner. And I would say I understand the most about this budget. I'm sure years helped, but the detail has been very thorough. I will add, in the comment about public safety sales tax only being 4% of the budget, I will add that without that public safety sales tax and the ability to address what the public voted for and approved at 70%, we would have really been in a different place. So I appreciate that work and the public's support.
And I apologize on this. Christopher Cole? Christopher? He's usually here, okay? Any other discussion? Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. I... Budgeting is tough, especially when times are tough, you know? And I... Here's what came across to me more than almost anything else was pride. The issue of pride, the topic of pride. How we feel about our community? How proud are we of the city in which we live? How proud are we of our people and each other who deliver these services? And I just couldn't get past the notion... You know, we asked everybody, what would be the worst-case scenario? Present your major cuts if we had to go that far. When I had to listen to Ben Dow, our Public Works Director, say, well, you know, I don't like the idea of weeds in our burms. I don't like the idea of the intersections being crappy-looking. I mean, he had a pride in our community that his department gives us and provides us, even in the littlest details, a good-looking city. You know, snow removal and taking care of our streets and our works. And I'm just really glad, Mayor, you got us to a budget where we're not sitting there and we're not pulling the Band-Aids off and we're not going to sit and look at weeds places where we didn't before. We could have gone that far, you know, in this budget. And it's really tough. We're all challenged with our personal budgets, making our ends meet. You know, and I'll say one more thing. We heard a lot about the airport. I'm really pleased that the airport is solidly, as expected and hoped, funded in this. We heard a lot about the arts. The arts. There's not a lot of people who love... It's a big part of our component. I'm pleased this is protected in this budget. You know, we heard a lot about what people really, really care about. And I don't think we've cut services in ways that are going to be real noticeable to people on a daily basis. But we have our hands full. So thank you and our team for putting all this work together. And thanks for the people in the community who spoke up for the library, who spoke up for the arts community, who spoke up for the airport, who stood up for what they want our community to be, not just a budget that's tightened, but they want some amenities too. And some sizzle. Nothing wrong with sizzle. I can't wait to the point where we get a half a mil for arts, frankly, someday. But good work on the budget, everybody.
Roll call vote?
I have a comment, Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Pepcorn?
So this was released and made public today at 12:00. And so now we're voting on it at 5:22:00. So we've had five hours. It was not available to the public until noon. So none of the public has had any access to see what was even in the budget. And so now I keep hearing, well, we need to listen to our public, but we don't even have time. So we're just supposed to pass this without even looking at it? That sounds familiar to me. So I obviously object to... What it should be done is this should be delayed and have two weeks so people can actually look at the budget and see what's in it, instead of releasing it at 12:00 and voting on it at 5:00. And I had a professor that said, "Don't make your lack of preparation my emergency." And I think that's a good quote. So I will be not voting in favor of this.
Mr. Turnberg?
Commissioner Strand, that... Your comment makes me a little nervous because it makes it sound like this budget is cut and dry, which it is not, correct, Mr. Chair? So I think we can still take steps to improve it and tweak it. It's just now that we were given it today, we can dig in and really see what is being cut and what is staying. And maybe everything that is there right now shouldn't stay. So I agree with Commissioner Pepcorn. I think we do need more time to digest this, for the public to digest it. And I think we can still improve upon it.
So the public hearing is designed as September 15. Review of the budget and go through the budget. At this time, it's just a preliminary budget, and it sets the highest part of what we can do with the budget. The ability for the public to be part of this budget processing is there. And any commissioner, Mr. Turnberg thinks she has some more savings for us, you're all welcome to interact and give us those recommendations. The final budget will come out later. So this is just... It sets how high we can go, our revenue expenses, and it sets a bar of what we can all interact with. We tried it different this year. We did have a workshop that we did go over many of the cuts we would or would not do. We heard from the public, don't take the arts out. We heard from the public, leave Northport in it, which we responded to and left in the budget. So roll call vote, please.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
No.
Turnberg?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item 45, Broadway benches.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I want to go through the Broadway streetscape amenities and pedestrian ways. So to give you a little bit of history, Broadway was reconstructed in the 2000, and all the amenities were added at that time when the roadway was reconstructed. So they are... They've been in the right-of-way for over 20 years, and we've never done a reevaluation or reassessment of those. In 2013, the city engaged Confluence, which was then Land Elements, to provide streetscape guidelines to address sidewalk amenities and spatial requirements for downtown streets. In December of 2020, the Broadway Square opened, which provided additional amenities to the downtown area. In 2023, the Downtown in Focus Take Action Plan found that the sidewalks on Broadway, a signature street for Fargo, tend to be too narrow and crowded. In fact, part of that plan even states, I think, if we would build it today, we probably wouldn't do diagonal parking on both sides. It would be more like adjacent to Broadway Square, where it'd be parallel on one side and diagonal on the other to give you more walking space. Many of the buildings have been redeveloped, and in some, the entrances have been relocated. And we have not done a reevaluation of the amenities with those doorway relocations also. So today, we recognize that there is a need to reevaluate the amenities along Broadway. The amenities actually include not just benches, but our trash receptacles, the wayfinding signs, bicycle racks, plants, anything that is in that corridor. We do have streetlights there too, but those are all staying where they're at. Downtown is very unique, where we have the bid assessment that helps maintain these amenities. So planning and along with engineering completed the initial review. The DCP is working with Confluence to design and construct their wayfinding signs. We are collaborating with the DCP. Confluence is expanding their work to include further evaluation of amenities along with the relocation recommendations to look at distribution in all tiers of downtown. So within our initial evaluations, we looked at the different zones we have. So we have the furniture zone, which is adjacent to the building. We have a pedestrian zone, which is our walkway, and then the buffer zone, along with our ADA needs. The Second Avenue intersection has many active storefronts along with the two-way vehicular traffic and sightline clearance needs. It's one of our more congested areas, especially with Broadway Square there. We also look at passerby with wheelchair needs. So we have maintenance and upkeep needs. With the age of all of our amenities, we are looking at the maintenance and upkeep needs also, which is the repainting and powder coating of those. I am going to invite Rocky Schneider up to visit also. He's got a couple of slides. In my memo, I've asked to receive and file the preliminary report that we have done and then to talk about what options you want to move forward. And we can circle back to that after Rocky visits.
Thank you, Brenda. I'm Rocky Schneider with the Downtown Community Partnership. I'm also the administrator of the Business Improvement District. And as of last year in the summer, we now are responsible for Broadway Square as well. Just have two slides for you here that... I think are going to be full screen there, so I can read it too. But we, as Brenda mentioned, we are working with the Confluence, a firm downtown, to do a reevaluation for pedestrian signage. This is part of the in-focus plan. And this is just a draft sign concept. This has been in our budget for the last three or four years, and we're getting to it now. And we hope to have something designed in public input this fall with over winter and spring to be able to put these in. We do have 14 signs on Broadway right now. I would challenge people to tell me what's on those signs. I don't think they're very effective as they are. So we've done a lot of study about other signs in downtown. How can we point to amenities like parking ramps, which is still the number-one question I get asked about downtown? Parking, murals, city services, other important sites downtown, maybe where the murals are located, safety contact information maps. And so this is critical, and part of balancing the needs of a pedestrian nature of downtown is things like seating and signage and garbage cans and everything else in our limited public right-of-way. So what makes downtown fun and unique is that we all share that right-of-way. The businesses, residents, and visitors all kind of share that right-of-way. Our front doors open up into it. And so as Brenda mentioned, with the implementation of Broadway Square in the year 2000, we added something like 145 seats for public seating. And that has allowed us to look at other areas in the public right-of-way and what other amenities could we provide to go along with that? And I just want to maybe say a couple of things because I think... I was gone last week. I was on vacation when a lot of the media came out about bench removal. And I know that's been a subject in the past. that's been a subject in the past, and I'm happy that it's brought a lot of people to the discussion. I think we are looking at removing some benches. I would also like to add to that narrative that we're looking at a number of relocation sites, working with Confluence. We've identified, I know, a couple dozen potential sites downtown. We aren't releasing those sites yet, as I'd like to talk to those different businesses and landowners and everything else along there as well, and let Confluence finish their work on those, but we're close on some of them. Some of the businesses have been supportive of it, and trying to figure out where both there's right-of-way available, but also where is their seating needed that there's not right now. So, some of this looks, talks about removing benches. I would say it's actually about expanding public seating downtown. It's a very beneficial amenity, but it's also putting it where it's not conflicting with other needs and priorities. And as Brenda said, as development happens, having a bench right in front of somebody's door is not an ideal spot, and we wouldn't have designed it that way if we had to redesign. But development over a couple of decades changes things. So, we have this contract, but I also want to just do a little inventory here. So, this is my self-inventory, so the numbers are probably slightly off, but I think it's pretty close. When you look at public seating downtown, I looked at Broadway and then two blocks off of Broadway, so between Fourth Street and then, I guess, two blocks over to, whatever that street is, Robertson, and then the next one, there's not a lot that into the west. But, um, we have three hundred and twenty-seven seats for the public in a hundred and three different locations. When you look at, that's the total. When you look at what Broadway Square makes up for that, that we've added to the public seating, which we are the administrators of, also includes the public restrooms that we take care of through bid, is a hundred and forty-five seats in forty-two locations, which is about forty-four percent of the public seating. When you look at the benches between MP Avenue and Fourth Avenue, which I'd say north, within two blocks of Broadway Square, which would be my recommendation of areas, we could use that to provide other amenities, we're talking about ten percent of the total public seating, sixteen different benches. Then when you look at the rest of Broadway or within two blocks, that's not in those other totals with Broadway Square and between MP and Fourth, you're talking about another hundred and fifty seats at forty-five locations. And so, I think the, maybe some of the media narrative about removing all public seating or all benches, it's not really the case. We're looking at, you know, relocating some of those sixteen benches. There's a couple of different options on the sixteen, that's my number. The sixteen, I think, could all be removed within two blocks of Broadway Square, as we look to add signage and refurbish the other public amenities there. I'd be happy to answer anything else. I know one thing I wanted to say, because it, it often comes up. We do have pretty severe problems on the benches at times. And if you look at the number of police calls to actions at the benches, it's very high. I think if any business had those type of calls, they would be in front of the City Commission as well. So, I don't think it's a surprise that that topic has come before the City Commission. I do want to say that removing the benches doesn't remove the problem. I think the city, you know, has been working on it with our collaboration with the Police Department and, and harm reduction and everything else. That's all still going to need to happen and continue. But I do think having those interactions right where we also want pedestrians to be and businesses to be, maybe there's a way to relocate those somewhere else and still provide that public seating. I don't think the benches are solving the problem, or maybe moves the problem. I think we still have to address it with other things as well. But I do think this will limit some of the negative interactions and customer experiences that we do see there. But there, public seating is very important downtown. And so, I don't want the impression that we're not supportive of it. We manage almost all of this public seating through Broadway Square or also through the bid, maintaining the benches. It does require a lot of effort and a lot of work, and some of it's being abused right now, and we don't like that either.
So, Rocky, I was down at the farmer's market, pretty busy, a lot of people out and about. How would you say the summer has been for the downtown community? Were you hoping improvement? Did we see some improvement?
Yeah, and I, I say downtown's worked best when we're all working together, and events are the time when we usually all work together. And I think our events are still at capacity. I think events are a great time downtown. I think people are willing to come downtown for events. They know they're going to be great, and well, they'll be well taken care of. I think when there's not planned events, we have seen a decrease in traffic, and so I think that's due part to the customer experience, the perception of downtown, some of those ongoing issues that we are working toward as a collaboration with the city, and I think we're doing a lot to address them. I think there's some continuing challenges that are outside of our control. I think there's a, you know, a growing number of those without permanent housing that, you know, is on the city, but also on, on a much broader level, needs to have more solutions and more funding and more resources. But I think as a downtown, we're managing those efforts well, and I think our collaboration with harm reduction and police have gone over well. Are we keeping up with the growing numbers? I think time will tell. I think our businesses though, do end up feeling the brunt of some of that impact, and it unfairly pits two different issues against each other, that not really the business's responsibility to manage those issues, nor is it, you know, something that they have to, I think, either in some of these instances.
Brenda, anything else you want to add?
No.
You have, you have two motions on, in front of us. Have you come in on the ones?
Yep. And so, the two options that we had in front of you in regards to is to receive and file the preliminary report, and then in that preliminary report, there are nine areas that just are very obvious, where it's really congested, that we're recommending to remove the benches. So, one option would be is to remove those nine that are very obvious through the preliminary report, and then upon completion of the final report, a full recommendation will be made, including potential relocation sites. The other option is to just wait for the completion of the final report and to address removing and relocating the amenities.
Thank you. I wanted the public to be aware of that, because now we're going to go to public comment. I have a virtual commenter first, Olivia Fisher, are you on? Rocky, you can sit down if you want. It's going to be public comment. Olivia Fisher, are you on? Brian, do we have her? No, okay. We'll go in person. Bradley Foster, Bradley Foster, come over to this podium, please, Bradley. Public comment is two and a half minutes, just your number.
Hello, like I said, I'm Bradley Foster. I've lived downtown for the better part of a decade now. I've worked all around downtown. I've walked downtown. First off, while I appreciate the vague promises of replacing seating, without concrete plans in place, where does this leave much of our community? Our pregnant mother is not supposed to enjoy those areas downtown if they need to see it? Is my father, who's a war veteran, who can't walk as far anymore because of his heart, not allowed to come and enjoy downtown the same way? That kind of seems like the implication, doesn't it? Removing, these are not optional amenities. For a lot of people to enjoy downtown, those benches are essential. And secondly, and he kind of hinted at it, which I appreciate, but can we just be honest about what this is about? This sure seems to me like a ham-fisted approach towards dealing with the homeless population. And if we want to do that, that's fine. We definitely need approaches to deal with these people. But simply removing benches isn't going to do it. We need actual concrete steps. And furthermore, I mean, let's just be honest about exactly why it is that we're doing this. And to the City Commission, while I agree that budgeting is an issue, perhaps if we in the city of Fargo would, instead of giving, I don't know, millions of dollars so that Doug Burgum can put his name more over downtown, maybe we could actually fund real solutions. Removing benches isn't going to do it. And finally, can I just say, it just sounds so petty. It sounds so cruel. I have a nineteen-month-old daughter. In a couple of years, when she's walking around, am I supposed to walk with her and say that the reason that there's no benches downtown is because we in the city of Fargo would rather get rid of people that need help than actually help them? Is that what we're proposing? I know a lot of Fargoans. They're nice, caring, kind-hearted people. This smacks of cruelty. It seems like the proposal that a sixth-grade bully would have towards addressing homelessness. To be honest with you, it is not a good reflection on our city, and the fact that we're even having this discussion in this way is embarrassing and juvenile. With that, I cede the rest of my time.
No. We don't clap at this meeting, I'm sorry to tell you that, and if we do, I'll clear the room. Shane Maureen?
Hi, I'm Shane Maureen. I'm going to be echoing pretty much what has been said already, but removing the benches downtown is another blatant and calculated move in order to continue and further harm the homeless population here in Fargo. Ladling this discussion regarding these benches is anything but is a bold-faced lie. I live downtown on Broadway, right next, right next to our plaza. Every day, I see the harassment and isolation that our homeless population experiences from law enforcement and a choice few of my fellow Fargoans. And it seems that more and more often, I hear about the ways that this commission continues to consider and humor ways to not only perpetuate these attacks on this vulnerable, vulnerable population, but make the harm they face more and more extreme and unbearable. We can see what the true goal is, to make the life for these people, these human beings, so miserable that they'll either leave or they'll die. And all I can say, all I can ask is why? Because they make you uncomfortable? Because they aren't included in your vision of Fargo? Or is it because that when you see them, these people, these human beings, you understand that they are a direct result of your failings as elected officials? Maybe you've forgotten your humanity, so let me remind you. These people are a part of our community, not some trash on the side of the road that you can dispose of. If you weren't so set on continuing the cycle of abuse, you would be able to see that your repeated attempts at eliminating them, cleansing them, will only produce more homeless, more suffering, and more anger. But maybe that's your goal, to perpetuate their harm and take advantage of the results. These choices that you make, and they are choices that you're making, will forever tarnish your lives and your legacies. We who still have our humanity will make certain of that, I promise you. I yield my time.
Jerry Spohrri?
Hello. Hey, my name is Chase. Longtime viewer, first-time caller. I'm here to comment on this, the proposed removal of these benches downtown. I'd like to hear a lot of what the other speakers have been saying, and I would like to encourage the commission to take that option too, right? Like, the problem is, is that, like, I don't want to see these benches removed without a dedicated plan to make sure the seating isn't put back into place. The seating is critical to maintaining that we have accessibility downtown, right? I've got a sixty-five-year-old grandmother who cannot walk a full block, a full city block, without stopping to rest, and depending on which benches are going to move, I can no longer bring my grandma to the, the farmer's market, and that's going to be a problem. As far as to talk about the effect on the houses population, you guys have really dug your own grave on that, right? Like, you guys have engaged in a very deliberate project of immiserating these people's lives, of making it more difficult for them to exist downtown, making it more difficult for them to exist anywhere where they might run into other people, and even, taking, giving the benefit of the doubt that this policy really does have been definite purposes to, you know, remove these benches, to increase traffic downtown. It's really not like a logical leap to see that this is an extension of that project. And to hear otherwise feels like you're pissing on my leg and telling me that's raining. I'll cede the rest of my time.
Thank you. Public discussion is done. Do we have a motion? We have option one and option two, so I'd ask Commissioner, if you do a motion, please cite which one you want to push for.
I will make the motion to approve option one. And I would have some comments after that.
Is there a second? Is there a second? I'll give you a second. Now you have to run the rest of this part of the motion.
Well, but I made the motion.
I know, but I seconded it. Nancy, can I concede?
No, I think you can run the rest of the meeting on the motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Colepack, you want to make a comment?
Yeah, and I, I've, I've read all the attachments, and I, if, if you've followed any of my initiatives before, I always take a very pragmatic approach. I think I try to stay very even and non-political in my decisions, and I'm going to tell you why I do support this right now. And we've heard from both sides, definitely, but when I read the report, and it has been a number of years since there was a consideration of traffic flow downtown and seating, there have been improvements made downtown, specifically Broadway Square. And I would not support complete removal of these benches, but I do support the, the relocation of a couple, where we have seen a couple corners that have become more congested, both with food vendors there, but also there's a couple areas that have become more problematic. And, and again, this is not in my, in, in any way meant to be punitive to the population. We just, preliminary budget that includes services and support to continue the work that we're doing at the Engagement Center, providing services, working with community partners, to address the areas of homelessness and unhoused, and, and also to continue the outreach we do see downtown. To me, there has to be a, there, you know, there can be an interim solution for now with moving a couple of the benches, keeping, and in fact, in the end, having more net seating. The new seating is actually closer to restrooms and other amenities, and I consider this as a pilot until we can figure out how we're going to have either the resources and the community support, including private funding, to address this very complex, larger issue of housing. We have businesses who have been greatly invested also in downtown, and every day are there trying to support their business and community, also very concerned about how do we address the problem together and collectively. So, I see this as a small pilot to really sincerely look at relocation of a couple of benches that are close right now to Broadway Square, that have a, a bunch of new seating, and also address some of the concerns of, of the business owners who have invested, understanding that we continue to support the services that are really make, going to make a difference, both in homelessness and, and the work we're doing to connect people to important resources. So, I just want you to clearly understand my position and the thought process that went into it, and to me, it's a reallocation of city services to other areas that now don't have seating, and those are my comments.
Other discussion. Mr. Strand, your lights on?
Certainly. You know, this is, this, I've been around downtown way too long, and I've heard this conversation a few different times. I, I remember when they, one time years ago, were getting rid of the backs of the side, the benches, they were putting out backless benches to address the, the problem. You know, yet, you know, that didn't change anything. We, we turned the bench, which way do the benches face? Do they face the street, or do they face the buildings? That was a big issue at one point in time. You know, I remember, I, I think there's even a church with a homeless piece of art sculpture on it down, down the street here. I, I understand completely the businesses who want, don't want loitering in front, and I think loitering is the issue.
Yes.
And public intoxication can be an issue, but I don't know that the benches are the issue. You know, I, 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 I remember Fred Hagen, there's a plaque down the hall here of Fred Hagen, who, his father was a commissioner years ago, and Fred, and Fred Hagen used to stop in and visit me on Broadway. I've been downtown for thirty-some years, all right? And he'd say, "I'm an old man, I need some shade." I'd go, "Okay, and, and I need a place to sit." You just can't expect us to not be able to, you know, and he's, it's basic stuff. I remember years ago, the owner of Boerth's downtown was pointing at, thirty years ago, pointing at people, saying, "We need those people gone." I said, "Well, the answer isn't getting those people to be gone. The answer is to fill it with all the other people." And I said, I use the example of Georgetown. Have you been in Georgetown? I said, "I, I, you know, you, you, it's a community of people. You just, you have a mix. The answer is to fill it with everybody, so we just don't see those people." I don't know the, the answers here. I don't know if those people are the problems. I go to another town, I sit down a bench and watch traffic and people. That's what I do. When I moved away to New York, that's what I did. I did for hours and hours and hours and hours, watching people. So, I, I'm, I'm looking for more of a solution here. I don't just want to get rid of benches. I'm, I'm eager to hear from the DCP. I think they're major players in town and great leaders, and their, their wayfinding signs, good. Let's really put some fuel on that. But, and let's see where these new benches will be, rather than we're just getting rid of some. I'd rather see what the plan is, where they're going to land, how many they're going to be, and, and stuff like that. I'm, I'm, I can see both sides, but right now, I'm not quite there to give this a vote of, of confidence.
So, John, you'd say more an option two is what you would look to?
Closer. I'm still not there.
Okay. Would you be more comfortable if we tabled it?
Absolutely.
It appears that we should be more public input, and other people may want to weigh in on this. in on this. We could easily table it if it's okay with the motion maker.
Yes.
So Mayor, can I jump in? So tabling it would be Option 2. So the whole plan was, once, once we're done with our report, we will come back and make a final report and recommendation.
And that'll have where the benches will be moved and where the new location was.
Correct, so that would be more probably towards in September, we would come back.
And that'll give the, the public an opportunity to see what you're talking about, right? Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, I, I would be happy to withdraw my motion, if you want to withdraw the second and make a motion on Number 2.
So I will second Number 2. Any further discussion? So the option now is Option 2, wait for completion of the final report, mid-September, to press moving or relocating any amenities. Roll call vote.
Colpak?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
No.
Strand?
Yes.
Turnberg?
Aye.
These are Commissioner's assignments or reports. Commissioner Pepcorn.
No update.
Mr. Turnberg.
I have no update, but I would request for you to address the public on the concerns that happened over the weekend.
I wanted to do that. Over the weekend, we had two shootings, serious shootings in our community. We had two deaths, we have two people that are injured quite seriously. I apologize, because when I got up in the morning on Sunday, I said we should have a press conference sometime today. Police chief wanted to wait on that. In the future, what we're going to do as the commission is have a policy. I think the public gets concerned, wants to know what's going on, and is worried about what's happening in our community. Whether it's a flood fight, or whether it's any type of disaster in our community, the press has been our friend oftentimes and helps us. To the neighbors in the downtown area and to the neighbors in South Side Fargo, I think they were concerned, are we safe? Is the shooter out and around? Is there something that could harm me? A press fee, if you live in an apartment complex, you have no idea who the shooter was, if they're in your apartment, or if they're somewhere else, or who they are, what's going on. Rest assured, yes, we knew the police was working on it. Rest assured, we have policing and a variety of things going on to look at that problem. But I think the public deserves us to come in front of you and tell you what we're doing, what's happening, what we know or don't know. We might not know much, we might know a little. But we had a press conference today, and it became exceedingly clear to me that the press is requesting more quick access to what's happening. Now, I'm, just like John, I've been around here a long time. I remember the times in which in the evening, if something happened, the sergeant of the day or whatever would give a report. Wouldn't be a very long report, but if just a report, we're working on it, we're going to try to work this thing out. I think that's, as I reflect it, I think that's what the public expects. They expect us to tell us what's going on. And like it or not, we can say shelter in place, but that always asks the question is, when you shelter in space, when, when are you free not to shelter in space? What, what do you do, or what happens? And for most of us, not a lot of us are up at two or three in the morning, so it wouldn't be necessarily, we even know what went on unless you turn on your news in the morning, try to figure it out and try to figure out what happened. But in our space, we don't have too many shootings. We rarely have shootings in our community, and oftentimes, it's two people that know each other. I think the fear on this one, we weren't really sure. We weren't really sure, shooting outside a bar, did they know each other? Did bystanders get hurt? Did something else get hurt? But it gave us a sense that Fargo isn't what Fargo is, right? You, you kind of had that sense, are we safe? Are, are things okay? Are we going to be okay? And, and we don't like senseless deaths. We don't like deaths that, that just, that they don't make any sense to us at all. And our first responder responded, it was a difficult scene. I want to give congratulations to anybody who helped us out in that night, because we had to call out West Fargo, we called out the Sheriff's Department, we called out Highway Patrol, we called out North Dakota, we called out Morehead. Everybody stood up and helped us. Everybody does do that, because we have mitriade in our, in our community. But the scope of something in which you have a lot of people on the street, a lot of things happening, things that can happen, need enough people to maintain crowd control and those things. So I've tasked Mike to sit down, and I'll sit down with the police chief, and we'll just figure out a communication plan. Because July fourteenth, we had a shooting in which an officer was killed, and we had a kind of, we weren't quite used to that, we had to figure that out. But I do think for the public, we need to have a communication plan so you feel comfortable. And Michelle, I know you've been in, in media, I mean, there's some sense of when they want some types of reports, but I has a sense that they would like it sooner rather than later, and there might be a time element in that as well. You know, when I worked as sergeant, sometimes you had a, a report that was given every shift, so you kind of knew what was happening in your ICU, or knew what was happening on the floor. And I kind of put it to that, as maybe within eight hours, we should give a report, within twelve hours, you give another report. But I think we're to come up with a policy that the public would, would like to have. And we're a big city now, you know, you're metropolitan city and things happen. But that's my pledge to the community, is I think we need to readdress how we address things like this, so the public can be fully informed and feel comfortable with the course we're taking, and/or give us advice if they have advice. Right now, we're reaching out to the public to help identify the shooter and find the shooter. So these things are very important for our community, because we're all, all a part about our community and the safety of our community. So that's my report.
I would just like to add that I thought today's press conference was extremely disappointing. I felt you Police Chief Sobolski came across smug and arrogant and condescending to those reporters asking questions that residents have been asking all weekend. So it was just very, very disappointing.
Mr. Colpak.
I have a slide and a comment. The Fire Department, which is part of our Public Safety Team Fargo, the thirteenth class of the Metro Fire Academy kicked off today with ten more recruits who began eighteen weeks of intensive firefighting training. And the Metro Fire Academy is now a collaboration of three fire departments, Fargo, Morehead, and West Fargo, allowing us for, to realize more efficiencies. And it was this, and, and collaboration, the reality is, you know, there, there's a number of times when they all three do work together, and, and it's very important that that starts early and that collaboration continues. So it's worked extremely well. It was established in the spring of 2020, and the Metro Fire Academy has graduated ninety-six firefighters and has improved inter-agency coordination across the community. If you're interested in learning more about a firefighting career, you're encouraged to visit Fargo Fire. And I, I want, I say this sincerely, thank you to all who are here to speak tonight. Thank you to all who reached out about tonight's issues, both on budget and the benches. You know, the benches may seem like a small thing, but it's a tough issue really, and I know it's, it's a complex issue, and it can come across sometimes as non-caring, but sometimes, when you're looking for a solution, whether it's interim or not, your feedback obviously sincerely matters, and the more community engagement we can have, the better. I will add that it's also important as part of that community conversation that we have facts. You know, it wasn't complete removal of all the benches, but to try a few and to see how it worked, but relocate other assets to different locations now that we have more amenities. But I, I sincerely mean this, it's okay to agree to disagree on issues. I promise you will always have the reasons I vote the way I do, and your input is extremely important, so thank you.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Mayor Pike. I don't have any birthdays today, and people, you know, there's nothing more important than our people, you know? I, I built a business here in town that was on a shoestring budget, but we, we paid people with hugs. We paid them with appreciation, we paid them with a, we value you. That's how people felt important, was they're valued. So it's way, you know, and I, I've learned over time that, you know, when nobody's dying, we can handle everything else just fine. We've, we've had three of our people recently have their family members die. You know, last week, Nicole Crutchfield was down with her family, her mother's death. Last week, Kimber Anderson, from our City Administrative Office, was with her family because her, her father died. A month or so ago, Ben Dow's mom died. And these folks keep on doing work. I just want to acknowledge our people. I think it's really important, we, we always be aware of each other, and we pay attention to each other, and we hug and support each other, and know what they're going through in their lives. And, and on all those good and bad moments, it's not an announcement, not a liaison report, but just a note for some of our really, really key people that are still performing and delivering and providing services here, but they also, on the home fronts, are having just immense issues going on with deaths and things like that. Thank you all for what you do.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment, since everyone else made a comment? Our number-one job is public safety and law and order, and clearly, that is not what we're doing. We're, we're having a debate on inanimate objects like benches. It's like, the benches, that's not it. We have an unsafe city. We are not doing law and order. We're talking about all this stuff. We had a bank robbery and two murders this weekend. In Fargo. We are not doing our job. The taxpayers are paying the law enforcement to provide law and order. We are not doing our job. So we need some changes immediately, not, not tomorrow, and to have a press conference the day after? That's embarrassing. People didn't know what the hell to do at 1:30 in the morning. We don't need a day-later press conference covering your ass. We need some change, I want to see some changes, the taxpayers, the voters, we want to see some changes, because this is not working. Whatever good deeds you're worried about, it's law and order. People won't come downtown. It's killing our businesses. Do something. Thank you.
And Dave, you missed the press conference, but at the press conference, you would have been informed that this-
I've, I've heard the press conference was a disaster.
No, but you missed the press conference, so you don't know that the police are working on this, and they believe in what they're going to do. I'm not going to get into that.
It's time for some new leadership.
Do you want to talk about, the one thing I did forget to mention is diversion. On the diversion this week, on Thursday, we're going to open the Red River intake. It's a, it's a historic moment for the diversion project, which we're going to open the ability for the water to go from the Red River through an intake. So for those of you who want to see it, it's going to be a great event. Resident comments, we have three commenters. We have Neil Mentor. Mentor? Neil Mentor?
I'm a, I'm a homeless person in Fargo. I am currently homeless. You don't see me downtown because of the dangers of downtown. I live in a pickup truck, everything out of my truck would be stolen, my motorized bike would be stolen. I'm harassed when I go on the deck because I oppose them. Three weeks ago, I was escorted out of the deck, I couldn't even go see my doctor upstairs. You talk about benches are hurting the homeless, removal of benches? How about intravenous drug use? And the avocation of it? I had a whole thing to, to read, but as I was out front smoking, nervous about coming over here, I looked over, and there was a guy I've known homeless in this community for ten years, he's probably still sitting over here. He had orange caps, dirty needles, and was doing a shot right in front of your chambers. I watched that officer and the woman officer come around the corner and walk right by him and do nothing. They sat on the TV the other night and asked for more Narcon, because fentanyl deaths are up by eighty-nine percent. Eleven last year, thirty-two this year. Most of those being my brothers and sisters that I lived at Gladys Ray for ten years with. Seven years ago, I got sober and got out of here. This ain't about, this ain't about budgets, this is not about benches. You know, this fall, they promised they would be in these chambers with Housing First initiatives. Where are they? I know one person that ran off with over a quarter million of my dollars for housing, not being prosecuted. Why is she in orange? I steal a two-dollar sandwich, I'm not getting out of the Cass County jail. JAMA license ten-year plan to end homelessness has not worked. They're killing us, us people. Thanks, Mr. Strand. I really liked that reference. Thank you. Us people.
Joseph Garcia.
Hello, Joseph Garcia, local downtown business owner. Thank you again for allowing me the privilege to speak. I am calling on, coming here again for the second time, as I've gotten some, gained some ground on incident two-four-dash-four-eight-one-six-zero, and discovered how not the full amount of evidence was turned over to the state, but instead, partial evidence to the municipal courts. And believe that there should be an aster, aster, I'm sorry, aster, to help individuals such as myself get information in the process and where their cases go. Because I had to go through hell and back just to get answers, given my situation. And the full scope of it wasn't given to the proper authorities, because of that, the officers having the ability to interlocutively decide where to send the case. There, the Police Reform Committee should be brought back and more easily accessible for the public, so that way, this situation doesn't occur again. Now, had that ability or that options would have been given to the people, perhaps that person who lost his life downtown would still be alive, because the individual that perpetrated the crime was accused of armed robbery before, and he was allowed to continue to walk the streets. I'll yield my time, thank you.
Daniel Hazer.
Thank you, thank you for your time. I've had a wonderful forty-five days here recently. I'm a property owner, I'm a homeowner, and I had a squatter slash unauthorized people in my home, and what an eye-opener. And I've done some poking around, some investigating into talking with the sheriff's office, the PD, some legislators, and looking into century code ordinances, and I've found out the system's broken. And I think some tweaks and some fixing could go a long ways. And I don't need to give a lot of details here, but would it be possible to get on your regular agenda in a future date to go to dig into this a little bit more?
You could talk to staff. We'd have to see what you want to talk about, yeah?
Staff, or, or said again?
Yeah, you could talk to the staff, and we could talk about it.
Okay. Um, yeah, let's see. You know, I know there's a new bill, House Bill thirteen oh five, just enacted four days ago. It might solve the problem, but sheriff's office thinks it might not. I'd love to dig into that a little deeper on a different time here. I've, I've been talking to a lot of different people, ABST Law with Gregory Thompson Attorneys. I could give you a whole bunch of names, but this is public, so I don't know, I've never done this before, so.
And what we could do is, Nancy Morris is our attorney, we could meet with Nancy and talk about the laws that you're referencing.
Okay. I submitted my contact info, is that good enough for her?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. That's the end of public comment, we're adjourned.